Okay, welcome everyone to the Board of Selectmen meeting for December 12, 2020. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. A moment of silence for George Cook. George passed away on November 30th. He spent 14 months serving in the Korean War with the First Marine Division and was very proud to have been a Marine. After his service in the Marines, George went on to become a police officer, first in Lakeland, Florida, and then spent the remainder of his career in Abington where he retired in 1995. George loved animals and spent the time with his family, and his favorite place in the world was Maine. He will be missed by the many friends and family that he leaves behind. Thank you. Thank you. Public announcements. Mr. Hagerty, you must have something.
Oh, of course I do. Last one, last meeting of the year, absolutely, I do. It's very brief.
Keep it brief, though, all right?
I will try my best. I want to, at first, I want to congratulate and I want to extend my appreciation to all of the team of volunteers with Abington Celebrates, all the businesses and everyone in Abington who participated in the Abington festivities for Christmas this year, for this holiday season. They put a lot of work and effort into it to really make Abington such a special place during the holiday season and Abing, actually, I mean, actually, Abington Celebrate does it all year round, so we're very, very fortunate to have them. The ugly sweater murder mystery party to the Christmas stroll down at Island Grove with Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus, Buddy the Elf, and everyone's favorite Who from on top of Mount Crumpet. So, very, very thankful to Abington Celebrates, so thank you to them. And at the same token, I would like to wish every single one of Abington's residents and businesses, seniors, students, town employees, our first responders, everyone in Abington, a very happy Hanukkah and a very merry Christmas. We've gone through a lot these last two years, and it's, it's a great time that we can now celebrate together and really have a joyous and festive time. You know, I always think of this holiday season as the most important thing, our families, our friends, and spending time together, laughing and, I'm sure, smiling and, excuse me, laughing a lot and eating a lot of good food. I'm sure I'm gonna have a lot of family chocolate fudge. But as part as I usually do for Christmas, I wanna, for Christmas and Hanukkah, I want to finish off with a quote from my favorite Christmas book, Christmas story, that really captures the spirit of the season and what really this holiday season matters most. I'm sure everyone knows it, "How the Grinch Stole Christmas," Dr. Seuss. I'm not reading the whole thing, don't worry. "And the Grinch, with his Grinch feet, ice cold in the snow, stood puzzling and puzzling. How could this be so? It came without ribbons. It came without tags. It came without packages, boxes, or bags. And he puzzled for three hours, till his puzzler was sore. Then the Grinch thought of something he hadn't before. Maybe Christmas, perhaps, doesn't come from a store. Maybe Christmas, perhaps, means a little bit more." And that, for me, really captures the spirit of the Christmas and Hanukkah season and really getting down to the root of treasuring our loved ones, our friends, our community. We're so fortunate to live in Abington and really in this, really, one town, one family community. So with that, I wish everyone a very happy Hanukkah and merry Christmas. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Kevin?
I am not here.
Tim?
No, sir.
Mike?
Nothing.
I just have one thing. Many of you know the pastor brothers, Walter and Skinny. On December 10th, Walter turned 100 years old, and he's trying to catch up to his brother Skinny, who's 102. So if you see them, I would about wish them a happy birthday and happy holidays. So, next, first of all, anyone in the audience have anything to say about the agenda? Any questions or anything? Seeing none. Okay, vote to approve the minutes from November 28th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with an amendment of, to Section 3, adding that Alex Hagerty, myself, asked if and why no studies will be contact, will be conducted on the North School property. That was in the discussion between the North and Center School properties.
So would you like to make a motion with that amendment?
Yes. That, that was my motion with the amendment.
Okay. Second? Anyone?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
And Mike from Saints. Thank you. Vote to renew annual licenses. So what are we doing, Scott? All the liquor, auto body, no, not auto body, dealer licenses?
Commercial, alcohol, common vehicle, entertainment, automatic amusement devices, bowling alley, dilly-doo school, lodging houses, livery, class 1 and 2.
Okay. So let's take them one sheet at a time, if we may. As you can see on the first one, there's a couple crossed out, they are not reapplying. Once you have a chance to look it over, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the businesses on Sheet 1 for that, and they are supposed to avoid a God, pending all inspections, pay taxes, and paperwork.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Page 2.
Make a motion to approve all the businesses on Page 2 from Kuzyn's Pizza down to Encore Limousine, pending all inspections, pay taxes, and paperwork.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. On Page 3, let's do everything except AM Auto and Collision.
Make a motion on the Page 1 of the, class 1, class 2 renewals from AJ Repair to South Shore Auto Gallery with the exception of AM Auto Collision, pending all inspection, pay taxes, and paperwork.
See a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike, would you take AM?
Sure. Make a motion, we approve AM Auto Collision Center and Sales, 933 Brockton Ave.
Second to Vice Chairman's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention.
Next page is Page 4.
Make a motion to approve all the businesses on this page from Supreme Auto Sales down to Vito's Auto Center, pending all inspections, pay taxes, and paperwork.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number 3 is vote on pledge of license for Webster, Tim Mulane. Scott, can you explain what's going on here, please?
Yeah, just, the, the license order is allowed to pledge his license to use it for collateral for loans. Currently, that's what he's done in this incident, so the Alcohol Beverage Commission will ultimately approve it after your approval.
Doesn't change who owns the license and who's responsible, correct?
No, it's just a collateral.
I'll make a motion to approve the pledge of license for Webster, Tim Mulane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Jamie Kenny.
Jamie is not here, so why don't we jump to?
Jump to number 5. Informational meeting with representatives from Colonial Power Group, we got a community choice power supply. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Mark Capitano from Colonial Power, 5 Mount Royal Ave in Marlboro, Mass. I'm here to discuss the mailing that most people in Abington got over the last week and a half, two weeks ago. Has to do with your electricity bill, and it has to do with the supply side of the bill. So I'm just going to explain, and then I'm gonna just take a quick question and answer, but I want to hit kind of the same issues that's going to be, you know, affecting most people. So what actually has happened in the town? So the town has a municipal aggregation program, and they signed a contract with direct energy for a supply rate. So if you haven't seen your bill yet for National Grid on the supply side, National Grid's electricity rate, so the basic service rate, has gone up to 33891. And the town has a, a offer for you, you decide whether you wish to participate or not, and that rate's going to be 28490, or if you wanted to participate and green it up to 100% renewable, it'd be 25580, which is, from a historic standpoint, a very high rate. Still a 16 or so percent savings compared to basic service on the supply side, which is a wonderful thing. What happens after supply rates for the utilities change every, every six months? So in May, they did, made the very wise decision to bifurcate this contract, so it's four months at the 28, and then it's gonna come down to 134. And sometime before that, there'll be another rate when we sign a, another contract. But right now, there'll be a, a rate of 28490 until May, and then in May, when National Grid's rates change, the town's rates will also change to 13480. What does it mean to you? It means tonight, or any time this month, you have a choice in front of you. Do you wish to participate in the program or not? Without the, if you do nothing, and here's the, I believe the only hot button item, you'll automatically be enrolled and you'll generate savings for the next four months guaranteed. Next four months, 100%. I don't know what the, the National Grid rate will be come May, but I'm fairly certain this is gonna probably bring savings, if not will be more than competitive. So what do you need to do? If you wish to participate, believe it or not, you don't need to do anything. But how it will affect you? It will lower your rate from the 34, excuse me, 33891, down to that 28. All of the benefits that you're currently receiving through your, through National Grid, whether it's a low income discount, a farm discount, budget billing, automatic withdrawal, any of those things, all stay in place. Those are all National Grid or your, your utility company programs. They all stay in place, this doesn't affect anything. So what if I have solar panels, which affect a lot of customers? So the solar panels, well, everything will work the same. Again, that's a, a program with your utility and a solar developer. All of those benefits stay in place. I do, I do need to tell you that the way the utility works in Massachusetts, they always pay basic service. I'm gonna use as a proxy this winter. They will credit your bill for every kilowatt you produce at the 33891. You'll only be paying the 28490. So you gotta get that delta, so it's kind of like the program on steroids, if you will, because you're getting a little bit more. I need to warn everyone, let's just say that the 13480, that's the May rate, maybe National Grid comes in at 13 or 12 and a half, they would be crediting your bill at 12 and a half if you'd be paying the 134. Again, what is the town asking you to do? This, opt out? You can opt out and opt in at any time. I want, I want to make sure that I'm clear on this. This is not one of those third-party programs. Somebody is watching this program for you every day, all day. All they wanted to do is create a choice here in town that didn't exist prior, because if this didn't happen, you wouldn't have a choice before you tonight. You'd be paying 33891, or you could go to a private supplier, which General says is really a, make sure you read all the fine print. This has no fine print. You have no, you have no contract. The town has signed the contract on your behalf, allows you to come and go as you desire. You wanted to get out of the program, you can get out on your meter read, you can get back in on the next meter read. So it's not like a decision today is gonna harm you one way or the other, other than I know where the rates are, it will harm you, probably, 16% on the supply side, probably around, maybe $30 a month in savings each month with this rate compared to the National Grid rate. So if you decide to stay in the program, you won't need to do a thing. You'll automatically be enrolled with your January meter read, you'll see that on your February meter read, you won't need to do a thing. If you did not receive this mailing, more likely than not, you're in one of three categories. You're already on a third-party supplier, this is, you're certainly eligible to join, but this is, we're mailing to only basic service customers who already made a choice, and we can't switch your choice. You could also have a customer block on your account, which we're not allowed to get those customers. That doesn't mean you can't join the program, just means that you need to go ask National Grid, do I have a customer block on? Remove the block, and then you can go in and opt in. ColonialPowerGroup.com, there's, there's no, there's no problem, just go online, opt in, put in your account information, takes about 10 minutes, not even 10 minutes. And the last thing would be, if, so if you, if you currently are on greenup with National Grid, they consider that a choice. You've chosen to, to spend more money to green up your, your offer, much like the greenup product that they're offering here, we don't get that account either, just so you know. That's another scenario that we would not be able to automatically enroll you. So other than that, from a, a perspective, why, why would the town take this, and it's to deliver benefits to you, the, the end-ready payer? So all of us since 1997 have been getting supplied by the, by the utilities. Believe it or not, Abington did have a program up, saved about a quarter of a million dollars from November of 2017 to November of 2018. Due to capacity issues, we had to, it's an energy issue, it was better to go back to basic service, we had to go back to the process, we've done so, and now the program's back, back up and running, just, just for notification. This program will, will have no effect on how you deal with your utility. So you and I normally deal with our utility, lights go out, problem with our bill, issue with our meter. All of those issues, you're gonna call National Grid. This program has to do with the electron running through the wire, and that's all. So it's just a commodity piece. So 90% of the time, 95% of the time, when you're thinking, oh, I gotta, I gotta contact my utility, you still need to contact your utility. I have an issue with my meter, my power's out, there's a problem with my bill. All of that's going to stay. So on your bill, single line item change, still gonna come from National Grid, and rather than saying basic service, it's going to say direct energy, Abington Aggregation, or just A-G-G, Abington Ag. Then you know you're part of the program, you wouldn't see that until your February bill. Trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's basically it in a nutshell, but I'm here to answer questions people might have, whether it be the Select Board or the?
I, I have a couple.
Please.
And these are questions that were asked of me, I think I know the answers, but if you'd touch on it. Why is it opt-out only?
So unfortunately, the state statute 164-134, municipal aggregation requires that it's an opt-out. It's the only way to get a price that brings you stability in savings, if you will, and the reason I'm saying that is, if I said, we're gonna have an opt-in product, how, how many megawatts will we buy? For how long, and how many people are gonna join? And that's why the supply community can't, cannot produce a, an attractive price for that type of a program.
So the state says that?
Mandates.
Right, that's what I thought. And this will still be one bill, you're gonna get the same bill you always get, no changes except the one line on the bill.
That is 100% correct.
Right. And this was all voted at town meeting in?
2016, accurately.
Yes.
I believe it was 2016.
16. So those were the questions that people have asked me. This had to go to town meeting, the people approved it, state law says it has to be opt-in, I mean opt-out.
Correct.
And still the same bill you always get.
100% correct.
If you, your lights go out, you call a National Grid.
Correct.
There's a problem with the meter, you call a National Grid.
Correct.
Okay.
Just, just for repetition.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for being here, this is fantastic. I also saw your presentation that you gave at the Council on Aging, thank you for doing that, too. I'm gonna, a huge shout out to Amy Barrett for making that available, so thank you. Just for repetition, what, what again is the projected savings in the long run for the average Abington household?
So I would imagine, just probably looking at $120, about $30 for the first four months. What I don't know is they haven't purchased the energy for the second six months, that would be May through November, but I'm going to say it'd probably be around $5 or $7 a month. I expect it to be a little bit higher than the rates have been lately. So normally in the summer, you're normally gonna see a rate somewhere around 10 or 11 cents for National Grid, I think they're gonna be northward of 14 cents, just given their buy this, unfortunately, they had a, just a horrific buy this September, that hurt them.
Okay, thank you. Second question, I, someone asked it at the Council on Aging as well, and I think it was a good one, 'cause I've heard it on social media and from different residents. Is the town getting any benefits, any kickback from this? I know there's some, there's some concerns, people, people were concerned, and I, I thought...
The, the only benefit that they're, there's no, no financial benefit to the town, they're doing this to, to save the towns, to give the townspeople a choice, otherwise they didn't have.
And one more thing, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Alex.
In May, if the rates, National Grid rates are lower, everyone could opt-out in May if they want. They could opt-out in, in every month.
That is correct. Every time on the meter read is all, I just want you to know that.
Right.
So normally you see your bill right after your meter read, and we can't move you to the next meter read, but that is exactly correct, sir.
As many times as you want, in and out, you can follow the pricing and make your options.
That is correct. And right on ColonialPowerGroup.com, there's a link right there to basic service rate, so if you have that website, you don't have to go search it, it allows you to go directly to National Grid's current basic service rate compared to the rate that's on the town program. This is not a third-party supply contract. This is to benefit the community. It's not, it, there's no small print here, just not, just not part of these programs.
So who is Colonial Power Group?
So Colonial Power Group is, is what I would call consultant or an aggregator. We, we take it through the local process and the state process, and then at the end, I'm gonna say I take off the hat and I turn onto the broker, and then we take you out to the marketplace, that brings supply, people that want to serve municipal aggregation clientele in Massachusetts.
So you are an independent company?
Completely independent, that is correct.
And not, so you're not acting as a third-party, or you are?
I, I am not acting as a third-party supplier, I'm acting as your consultant in the marketplace to bring you pricing, give you advice, those kind of things. What we do is municipal aggregation.
So if we didn't have Colonial Power Group, we'd have National Grid?
You'd have National Grid, correct.
So why Colonial and not National Grid? What makes you different, and why should we go with Colonial?
Excellent question. So, believe it or not, and this is gonna be shocking, so for the last, I'm gonna say, we're over maybe 24 years, National Grid goes out and procures your electricity on, on behalf of all basic service customers. And everyone thinks, oh, they're out there managing the load. They're not. They're out there managing a process. So they buy 50% of their needs for 12 months, twice a year, in September for a November start, and then again in March for a May start. They overlap those two 12, 12-month periods, those six months, that's your basic service price. They're indifferent, and I mean this honestly, they're indifferent about whether or not pricing is high or not. Two years ago, they absolutely would have gone long, we're at historic lows, they would have bought as much energy for as long as they possibly could. They didn't. They bought 12 months, 50% of their needs, exactly what they, what they're looking for. Here, they hit the tip of the market, it's unfortunate, it's not their fault. They have two trading days during the year, twice, they go up to bid for basic service. I have 210 trading days a year. We have a low profile here in Abington that, that can be served for 36, 40 months, that they were taking advantage of. So I have a lot of advantages in the marketplace. By I, I mean you, the residents, and, and, you know, government of, of Abington. Normally, if you take a look in the long term, aggregation has been, been able to control, meaning I, I have a stable price, I have something that might be a little bit greener, and hopefully it's been delivering savings. I can tell you, on average, the state of Rhode Island has somewhere between 8 and 10% savings over basic service, all aggregations compared to basic service.
So how big is Colonial Power Group? Is there, does it go by towns, does it go by users? I mean, you're opt-out, how many people?
So we deal with 80 communities, sir, in Massachusetts. 80 different communities in Massachusetts.
So when you're buying power, if you will, are negotiating, you're negotiating on behalf of 80 communities?
I do, 8, 8, so we, we do it a little bit different, but it's true, but it's not like we buy that all 80 at one time. Everyone's contract is at a different beginning, an end, and so forth. So we have some people that, right now, still on one of those old contracts, paying 8.7 cents, and then brand-new contracts as they come up, it's the market, right? So we're at 20, 28 cents.
And how often, you said 210 days, but how often are you buying power? Like, National Grid buys for two times a year, six months worth, what do you buy each time?
It depends on the curve, so right now, we're gonna buy short, like we did here in Abington, where two years ago, I would've said to you, go 40 months, go 50, take it as long as you possibly get.
That's what I'm saying, so in theory, if there's a low rate, you could go out, Colonial Power Group could buy 50 months' worth of that rate?
That is exactly correct.
What is the longest rate you guys have bought?
46 months, a 42 plus a 4.
And is that, in, historically, looking back, has that been a bad buy, and, you know, totally?
Oh, it's been, so the reason we bought...
Times have changed a lot, but the time?
Yeah, that was a very advantageous time, I wish I could've bought more at the time. This was just two years ago, we were at historic lows at the beginning of the pandemic, and natural gas was about a dollar sixty per, per mm BTU.
And that contract that you, oh, you would negotiate with, for the power, that's good and valid, I mean, nothing can be backed, though, nothing can be changed?
That's a great question. So that is a fixed-price contract, 100%, but there are small changes, they're called change in laws. Actually, some go on right now, the DEP just changed the clean energy standard, and there's some, some towns that have a slight increase coming, .001, something like that. But as far as just the supplier saying, hey, I'm gonna jack your rate from 8 cents to 16, no.
And if that rate, those changes do go into effect, how, how fast will that hit the consumer, and what notification will we hear?
So by law, we're required to give the Department of Public Utilities 10 days notice before we ever, even, even put anything out there, but everyone would know 30 days before, so that if they, for any reason, they didn't want to participate, they could opt out again.
Okay.
Great question, great question. I, I just don't know form here.
Oh.
So I'm sorry.
Any, any other selectmen?
For, for residents who are looking to opt out, what's the best way for them to do that?
So in this, there's an opt-out card in this mailing, suit, as well as a stamp addressed envelope, they simply sign that card, put it in the envelope, put it in the mail, they're out.
Okay.
It doesn't mean they can't get back in. They go, if they don't want to do something here, they go to ColonialPowerGroup.com, there's an opt-in button right there, just choose our communities, and you choose Abington, you simply opt out right there online, it's done that day.
Is there a number that, just in case if someone doesn't have access to?
100%. 866-485-5858, and it's Extension 1, it's all over this mailing.
Perfect. And then if, for the, for the other resident who isn't in the basic services program, how can they opt in to?
Exactly. The easiest way, and not have to share information, simply go on the ColonialPowerGroup.com website, they can always call that 866-485-5858, and explain, you know, to our call center, Extension 1, and they'll, they'll opt you in over the phone. Again, I want to make sure that everyone understands, nobody here is trying to hold anyone out of the program or, or keep anyone in the program. This program is about choice, community choice aggregation.
And one more time, the people that did not receive that envelope, why did they not receive it again?
People, they're either on third-party suppliers, the biggest reason, they have a, a supplier block on their account, so customers don't want to get all the phone calls and mailings that you get from the third-party suppliers, you put that on your account, and things quiet down. And then the other one would be if they were a greenup customer with National Grid, they'd made a choice to green things up with our Consumer Energy Alliance... They'd made a choice to green things up with a Consumer Energy Alliance, or there's another one, too. That's a choice that the department's saying they've made a choice. They don't get the mailing, but they can always join the program.
One last question. When you do negotiate a rate or when you come up with a new rate, that is a mailing to the customer or the consumer?
So the next rate, we would have to discuss that with the administrator, just making a decision whether or not he wanted that. We would let the supplier know that they were going to send, the winning supplier was going to send a postcard out to each individual customer. Or some people don't. We just update the website, you know, here in the town, put an article in the newspaper, you know, a public notice. But if that's something that you wanted to do to make that announcement, we certainly can make that happen as well.
And then when you're negotiating, whether it's a four-month deal or a 46-month deal, will that also be?
That would be articulated in the mailing.
That would be, okay.
It would all be on, it would absolutely be in anything. Again, this is a town program. We're not trying to hide anything. So we're going to say, just like we did here, the first four months, 28, the next six months, 13.
And would that be like the town's responsibility to send the mail, or you guys?
We take care of that whole, we took care of this whole mailing. The goal of the program is just directional from the town. You tell me what you're looking for, what needs to be done, and we're going to make it happen for you.
All right, anything else? Okay, who has a question? Gentlemen right there, yes. Please come up to the microphone. I need your name and address, please.
Chris Jones, 639 Randolph Street in Abington. And my question is, how long is this contract?
The first contract is four months and then six months for a full 10-month contract.
So it's a 10-month contract?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Thank you. Next, yes, sir.
My name is Larry Jacobs. I'm up on 41 Rice Street. The only question I have is, is there any downside to this program?
There is no downside that I can see. There is a risk, sir, that National Grid's rate could be below the town's rate at any time. Other than that, there is no risk.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike Kroski, 553 Lindwood Street, Abington. If we opt in now, we cannot opt out until May?
No. So if you decide not to opt out right now, you could opt out on your February, in your February meter read if you so desire. If you did not opt out then, you could opt out in your market. We can only do it on the meter read, but if not, you can never tie it into the program.
You can do it every month, in and out, if you want, but it's on the date your meter is read.
All right, thank you. You want me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Aaron Tridder, 29 Russell Lane. So National Grid changes their rate twice a year.
Correct.
So what, when did this other effect come in? The last rate you've quoted now is 33.8 or?
November 1st.
November 1st.
Yes.
It sounds like that because you have a number of times to go and purchase electricity over the course of the year, a contract will dictate when the rate changes, so that's going to be variable. Is that correct?
So no, the answer is no. This contract has two rates, both of them fixed on purpose so that we didn't try to get at a rate that was way under here this winter and then possibly over there. But we made a decision to have a split rate on this contract.
Okay, so the contract has dictated initial rate and then the change come the summer rate.
We put that in the contract, and we could have had a single rate if you so desired.
Right. So there will be another negotiation for the next round of rates after this contract expires.
Yes.
Got it, okay. I think that's going to do it.
And National Grid will change their rates on May 1st, is that?
On May 1st. So just so people are watching and their bills, so National Grid has the ability to change their rate on November 1st and May 1st. So the first bill that you got in your November was what I call a split rate. It has the 11.4 that was the rate this summer, and then have a 33, and then they just simply do arithmetic, right? If you're on the 15th of the month, you got half and half, half of 33 and then half at 11. And then you just meld that rate and divide. That's how they come up with it. These programs only happen on the meter read. So in February, you're going to see that 28, if you decide to stay in the program, that 28, 49, they're up. Because it's meter read to meter read.
And that's why everyone's complaining about the high bill from National Grid this month.
That is correct, because this month, it's the full month.
Right.
33.891.
I guess one last thing, because you mentioned buys a lot.
Yes.
In the contract, is there a certain, like, usage limit that this town of Abington has that if we go over, like, 5.4 miles, move down the street, right? Something like that?
Believe it or not, the answer is no. So there is no risk, financial risk to the town. The financial risk is on the supplier. The town is not entitled to power ever. So as long as the contract is valid and people can opt in, even if every single person in town opted out, the program would still be valid and they, somebody could join, there's not a problem from the supplier. There's a giant problem from the supplier, but there's nothing they can do about a contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else? Sure, come on in.
Chris Jones, 639 Randolph Street. I thought the DPW, the DPW, is that what it is?
DPU.
DPU.
Okay.
Utilities, I thought they were in charge of the rates.
So they approve the rates for the regulated utilities?
So they approve the rates?
That is correct, for the regulated utility.
So National Grid will go in and say, I want 33 cents, and they'll say, yes or no?
That's true.
Then they'll have to validate why, and then?
They just run their processes pretty much stamp-approved. Different process for the top part of their bill, which is the distribution, the transmission and distribution. They can win every year for a Bvorn space rate, and that's a much different process than the basic service rates. But that's the other side of the bill.
Okay, they don't know for this part.
They do go in front of them, stamp-approved, they really do. Yes, correct. Yeah, that's correct, yes. There's not a lot of interrogatories back and forth.
Okay, all right. That's what I wasn't sure about, because I have this over stolen.
They are approved.
You can just control the whole thing.
Utilities do control the process, but the Department of Public Utilities is the one that says this is a good rate, it will be okay. They stamp-approve those normally within 10 days after approval.
Do you have to get approval?
From the Department of Public Utilities? The town does on their plan, but not on their rates. This is deregulated. We're the deregulated market for the supplier, and the utilities are a regulated situation. That's why they just run a process.
Thank you.
I just want to say, if someone happens to be uncomfortable in this form, I'm more than happy to answer any questions after the meeting, out the hallway or whatever. We'll stick around and answer questions. I think this gentleman had a question.
Just a few. Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. So just to kind of step back, 40 years ago, the way it worked was that Boston Edison, for instance, owned everything. They generated the power, they transmitted it, they sold it to residents and businesses.
Yes, correct.
And 25 years ago, they started to break that up. So now there's companies who make the electricity, there's companies that transmit the electricity, and there's companies that essentially put it into your home or your business.
Correct statement.
Okay. So when we're talking about purchasing power, National Grid doesn't own the, you know, doesn't own the power plants anymore. They don't own, okay. So it's like Exelon, it's Constellation, some of these other bigger companies.
Correct statement.
So when you buy power, you're not buying it from a specific generating station, correct? You're buying it from kind of like the Northeast Grid kind of gets?
I assume that is correct. You're buying whatever power is out there. That is a correct statement again.
Okay. So it's not like, you know, you go, we're not buying it from the Mystic Generating Station, you know, we're not buying 8 kilowatts for Abington for the Mystic.
That is correct.
Okay. So I don't mean this in a rude way. How does your company make its money? Since you're not making electricity or selling electricity, where do you make your money from?
Great question. So we have a contract with the town for point 001. We call it a mill in the business, but it's one-tenth of a penny. I'm just going to make this simple for everyone. Let's just say the price of energy came in at 10 cents. Everyone on their bill would see a price of 10.1 cents. They would pay that, I'm going to use Direct Energy because they're the supplier. Everyone would pay the 10.1 cents to National Grid here. National Grid would send that down to Direct Energy. Direct Energy would then send us a check or line action.
So the idea of deregulation, I'm sorry to get back to the history, right, just to help understand it, is that basically, as you said, maybe National Grid wasn't monitoring prices enough. This allows groups to come in and say, we'll buy in bulk since, you know, as a single resident, I can't go to Exelon and say, hey, I want to buy power, aggregate into 17,000 customers in the area, and now you can get a better price for it. And that's what you go to the market with to buy it.
Correct. It's really not the amount.
I'm simplifying it really.
Correct, but you're creating a low profile that allows you to participate in the marketplace.
Right, okay. So I guess here's one question for Scott is, why Colonial? Are we, is there only one? Are there other choices? How does we get?
They responded to the bid and they were the.
Okay, so we put out a bid.
It was 2017?
2016.
2016.
With OCPC back that helped run it for, I think there was 12 communities in OCPC.
Okay.
We were the winning bid.
And as you said, we did it in 17 and 18, then there was a supplier or a distribution issue?
There was a distribution capacity.
So is this the first year back into it?
This is the first contract back. We had to go back because we stopped the program. And in 18, I have to go back through the state process, the local process and state. You don't have to go back to town, the select board, and then also the OER and DPU.
And the select board discussed this a month or so, a couple of months ago. Was it? Yeah.
And does that contract ever have to go back out to bid again?
Yeah, it'll eventually go back out to bid, but I think there was, when I had looked at it, it had extended into this time period.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, so we're going to move on, but if you do have any other questions, he'll be out in the hallway, and he'll certainly answer any questions for you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is Jamie going into executive session with us?
No.
No, okay.
No, she's just here for policies.
All right. So Jamie. And the fourth item is a meeting with Jamie Kenny from Clifford and Kenny, discussion and possible vote on the updated personnel policies. And we all have that.
So just by way of background, when Scott became the town administrator, he and I kind of endeavored to go through and figure out where the town was at in terms of policies and procedures, because we were hired as labor council around the same time. And so we have been going through rewriting, redrafting, and in many cases, there were no policies at all. So we had to kind of go from the ground up in terms of writing these policies. And then once we had a draft, we worked with your town clerk to make sure that there was nothing else that was operative and in effect that could, you know, obviously conflict with what's before you. So we've done that, we've completed that process. In terms of what's going to happen now in terms of these votes, because we have employees who are unionized, who are subject to collective bargaining agreements, two things of note here. First of all, nothing in these policies abridge, change, or modify anything in any collective bargaining agreement. And that's by virtue of the statute and also by virtue of the collective bargaining agreement itself. So the collective bargaining agreement is going to trump anything that's contained within any of these statutes. We also have an impact bargaining obligation with all the unionized representatives. So once this is voted, if it is voted tonight, it will be voted subject to impact bargaining. We will then go and give notice and opportunity to each bargaining unit, and we will engage in those discussions regarding any questions, comments, or concerns that they have regarding these policies, and it'll come back to you for a final vote. So the first vote tonight, if we go through, it would be subject to impact bargaining, and it would only apply at this point in time, if it's voted, to any employees who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. So that's, it's going to apply to your non-union employees right away. Your unionized employees, it'll go through that process of impact bargaining with each of the representatives. Once that process is completed, it will come back to you for a vote where there will be those highlighted changes. I have done this a lot in the course of my practice in terms of updating policies and bargaining policies from the ground up. And so I've worked with the different union representatives, and I kind of know where the potential issues are going to be, but a lot of it just has to come down to information sharing in terms of the fact that fees do not trump, abridge, or modify those collective bargaining agreements. But we'll get comments from them, we'll impact bargain that to resolution or impasse, and then we'll come back to you once that statutory requirement is completed. Two minor, like, just one, there's only, there's one additional policy that we're probably going to have come before you separately, which is a cash handling policy. When we went through, we thought we had a good handle on what we wanted that to be, but we just didn't, we didn't want to delay the process any longer. So there might be an additional policy that'll come before you after these policies. This handbook is kind of in place, but we didn't want to hold up the process any longer.
Can you explain the FMLA? I was told that a town has to opt into that, or how does that work?
So the PFMLA, which is the Paid Family Medical Leave Act, which is the state, it's a state-run program where employers, they, if they were going, public employees, public employers had to opt in. I think it was back three years ago or four years ago. And then withheld from employees' wages would have been that additional tax, which would have made them then eligible for that PFMLA benefit. Because public employees have so much paid time off when compared to their private sector peers, most cities and towns, and I think I can only think of one public employer off the top of my head, none of the cities and towns that I represented opted into that program, because again, we already have leave policies, we have collective bargaining agreements, and we have an ample amount of paid time off. So it's not a situation where someone does not have any sick time, does not have any earned time. We obviously give our employees, there's very generous leave provisions within these contracts and also within the policies for the non-organized employees. So in terms of what made sense for leave, that didn't make sense for most municipalities. Almost all municipalities did not opt into that program, and that would have had been done, you know, back when the law was enacted. So that's really not, it's separate and distinct from this program, and they've never been subjected to that program. So we are not having any change with respect to that.
Okay. Can towns still opt in if they wanted that?
I'd have to look at that. I don't think that it's something that I would recommend.
Like, the reason I ask is because someone asked me about it, a town employee. So that would be like a withdrawal out of their pay that goes in a line, kind of like unemployment?
It's very similar to, yeah, unemployment or workers' compensation.
Right, and then that is who would pay you when you're out for that time.
And it's only a portion of the full time versus, there's like benefit, and I actually am not familiar with it because none of the municipalities that I represent opted in, which is pretty much what we saw statewide, except for, I think, I don't want to speak off the top of my head, because it's 350 communities within Massachusetts, and I don't know the stats, so I don't want to misrepresent that to the board. Most places, it didn't make sense because it was more beneficial also for the employees to have the existing leave packages, because many times we have full pay for the 12 weeks under FMLA. So it didn't really make sense to have a lower amount, because they would also still have, you know, it's just, it didn't make a lot of sense.
Okay. That's all I have.
This is just a, this would be a negotiation every year when these policies are reviewed, just to get?
Nope, so the initial impact bargaining, and again, it's impact, it's not main table. So it's just basically whenever, the law in Massachusetts for unionized employees says that if there's a change to anything, any policy wherein the employees could be disciplined or discharged based upon that policy, that we have an impact bargaining obligation, which is different than when we bargain over wages, right? So we give them notice and opportunity, we meet with them over impact. The employees don't have the ability to say, for example, we don't want policies. That's not within their statutory rights under the law. And so it's the, it's impact bargaining is what we will be doing, which again, is giving that notice and opportunity and hearing from the employees based on these policies, anything that they have a concern about or a question about or anything they feel clarified about, we will go through that process to, again, our statutory obligation is resolution or impasse.
And all policies, no procedures, or is it a policy and procedure mixed together in policy?
So it's most, it's policy. So there are different SOJs and SOPs that apply to like police and fire that are separate and distinct from this. And again, with those specific interdepartmental policies, those would trump the town policy. So that's generally, it's going to be your collective. So that's generally, it's going to be your collective bargaining agreement. If there are specific SOGs or SOPs that are in place right now, that would go second, and then this would act as a gap filler in terms of third. And again, if there is no, if there is no policy or SOJ that's already existing within those departments, this would act, this would act as what the expectation is. This does not negate or abridge anything that has to do with discipline or discharge, because the standard for that is governed by the collective bargaining agreement, which is just cause. This is notice to the employees in terms of expectation and a centralized location for those expectations, because of the simple fact that we had a real problem in terms of making sure that everybody in everybody different department had the same centralized policies and procedures, because we had different departments doing things differently. And so this is really making sure that everything's centralized, it's uniform, we're able to make sure that we have fairness and equity in terms of what those expectations are, and this does all of that.
Is there anything here that says that it will go through an annual review process?
An annual review process for the individual employees?
No, the policy.
Oh, okay. No, there's nothing, there's nothing contained within, it automatically just goes through unless something would be, unless there was some sort of a, an issue with, in terms of the board that they wanted to make a change. So generally, it goes through, but we can do that in terms of an administrative issue, where you have the town, strong town manager, town, strong town administrator type of government, where we could, we could do that annually anyway. So we can do that through labor council and working with the town administrator's office to make sure that we do have that annual review, if that's something that.
Yeah. Wearing my other hat for a minute is.
Compliance.
Yeah. I do an annual review of all policy, all procedure. God has a change in it, ties are on it, it goes out, it gets signed with a new date, signature changes every single year. So that's the most up-to-date policy. You can change any other time, you list it up here, change in the CBA or this and that, and you can make the change and go it out. But that's why I was requiring annual review. And then my question was, again, apples, 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 oranges, is it in here or can we put it in here? Are these going to be in a specific location or locations accessible to all town employees? Maybe an internet page or whatnot?
To embark from my previous presentation, that is a great question. I do think an electronic format, either through an intranet or, like you said, pushing onto the policies, so there is a centralized electronic location for these policies, is a great idea, and that's something that we can do administratively.
Yeah, and actually, I mean, we also have the discussions that, that, you know, as we roll these out, they'll be training with all existing employees, and then all new employees will be required to sign that they've received them also.
Because that's the other really important component of this. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense from an employee's perspective, from a workplace perspective, to have a policy that sits in a drawer. Our goal is to really train these policies and really make sure that we're messaging to our employees what these policies, expectations, and standards are. So we're going to train these policies as well as just having these policies, which is, again, leaps and bounds above where we were as an organization just a short time ago.
Definitely. And then my last question is, I know this is all inclusive, and I was talking to Scott earlier about this, but will they be broken up so they're all standalone policies, or like, is every single time you change one word, hey, you're going to be printing 44 new pages and sending it out everywhere?
So generally, what we do is, and again, this is, again, this is more of a best practice standard, so if, we can do it a couple of different ways in terms of like, again, if there's a modification mid-year, and sometimes even the law changes mid-year, will we have to update a policy to comply with the law? What we do is we push that out as a standalone, and then you would modify those books or whatever it is at the end of the year during the annualized review. So we can talk about how that execution works and how it makes sense in terms of, in terms of messaging that to the individual employees.
On the performance evaluation, it says it'll be on such form as approved by the town. Do we have those forms?
So those forms are impact bargained. So we need to, we do have a, we have a form that we have in terms of a draft, but those, again, will be impact bargained. So the mechanism by which one is, is like that vehicle, we have a bargaining obligation over that vehicle as well as the policy. So this is going to put the policy into place, and then that specific vehicle, if applicable, if they already don't have a vehicle in their individual, like police and fire or whatever it is, we will make sure that we have a standardized vehicle that will be impact bargained.
Any other questions? So we need to vote to approve this?
It would be a vote to approve, subject to impact bargaining. So it would be a vote to approve in its entirety, subject to impact bargaining obligations.
And it's okay for Mike to vote on this?
That's, I can't advise him as to his, as to his recusal or non-recusal, that's, that's not without.
The easiest way. Yep. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the policy, subject to impact bargaining.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
That's based on some training.
Yeah. I want to document this. Just briefly.
I've been sure.
The next item is vote to open the FY24 warrant. Scott, do we need a closing date also, or leave it open?
If this one is February 13th, but we'll leave it open, that's our objective closing
Do I have a motion to open FY24 warrant?
I'll make a motion that we open the, we vote to open the FY24 warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Yeah, I have it. So now is when the screen goes black, because Scott walked out of the room, and it's a town meeting, the town manager report time. Just so the public knows, this is our last meeting of this year. Our next meeting will be the second Monday in January, which will be January 9th. And we will be back on our schedule with second and fourth Mondays. Well, one item I will bring up, it's the third paragraph. To date, the town has received close to $100,000 in opioid settlement funds, and we expect from one fund just over $1 million over the next 18 years. And then we received a check from either Walmart or CVS or Walgreens, or one of them, and we will be receiving checks from all of those. So it was my suggestion that we set up a committee similar to what we did with the APA committee to disperse those funds. They need, there's a set guideline on what we can use those funds for. Obviously, it's drug prevention and substance abuse and probably tobacco and education in the schools, and there's a whole list of things. So I think what I would like to see is that we form a committee that will stay in effect for the next 18 years, probably.
Yeah, essentially, I would imagine.
Yeah.
So that's why I was thinking, maybe we would appoint them with one-year terms and just renewable each year to this board, but obviously, put some preferences and qualification on their folks who have some sort of.
Right.
Background in this sort of thing.
Because this money can be used, the police department can use it, a private nonprofit could use some, the board of health, the schools, the fire department, there's a lot of different things that we can do with this for education and support for drugs, alcohol, and.
But just even allocating the money at this point, because the, you know, they came up with a great, you know, it was a great plan, and they went after these companies, and then they found a way to get the money to the communities, but getting the money back out is a little more different, because it's going into, comes into general fund, so they didn't, they didn't write into the legislation some sort of revolving-type fund method or easy way to expend it. So that, one of the big things that we'll be looking into is figuring out how to get the money back out to where it can best be used.
Well, I'm assuming eventually they'll.
Maybe a town meeting vote.
Yeah.
Is likely where it'll be.
So. So that, I think, what did you ask for, a five-member?
I think a five-member makes the most sense.
Yeah. So we'd like to put that out so we could appoint at the January meeting?
Yeah, probably the 23rd.
The second January meeting. I personally would like to be on this committee with my background with the Abington substance abuse and Abington copes, but that'll certainly be up to you guys. But we want people that, you know, have some idea on how we can best use this money. So we'll put that, Scott will post that, and we can appoint on the second meeting in January.
Yeah, and, you know, when I put it together and put something on the website, my guess is this committee, although at first they meet, they may have to meet a bit more often to get themselves established, it's probably, you know, they meet every couple times a year, or maybe quarterly or something to that effect. I don't think it's, certainly not going to be something where they have to get together on a weekly basis.
No.
Or even, probably not a monthly basis.
What if we do something like affordable housing, where you have a selectman liaison who's also a voting member? And their term is, I guess, basically their term is selectman.
Yeah.
That way, there's always a selectman, and there's a back and forth.
I definitely think there should be a selectman on this.
That makes sense, we can.
And that way, it's not the same person all the time, you know?
Okay, so Scott will take care of that, so you can skip paragraph three, Scott. Start at the top.
I thought you'd maybe finished it all.
No, 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 we didn't. Yeah, you can borrow my town manager's report.
Should have stayed in the hallway longer. So the library roof project wrapped up, or is wrapping up. Contractor does have some punch list items to attend to, some basic cleanup. My, the engineering company that we hired to work on the project for us will be out later this week to do a final inspection, or probably one or two after that also. Sione's landscape has been lined up by the roofing contractor to make repairs to the lawn in the spring. Overall, it was a good project, didn't actually start as when we wanted, but contractor was responsive to most of our issues, and once he did start, he got it done in an acceptable timeline. But as that project wraps up, Strawberry Valley project is begun. Contractor actually already stripped and put a new roof on the building last week. The, we've met with them, ordered the windows. So assuming that the weather holds out, he'll get going on siding, insulation, the windows and the doors over the next few months, and he's hoping to be wrapped up by mid-March. Couple items regarding the hazard mitigation plan. The first item is to remind everybody that the survey is still up on the hazard mitigation page, and we would appreciate residents taking a minute to fill it out. It's especially useful of residents who have been impacted by power failures, flooding, wind damage, most of us, to fill it out. And the second item is that we're having a public workshop on Tuesday, January 17th. We'll be in the evening, be held via Zoom. So as soon as Liz gets that information and when the meeting and what time it'll be held, we'll get it all posted up on the website, but we really want as many residents to attend and participate. Right now, most of our time and effort is going into the FY24 budget, and I gave you sort of the very first rough graph of it today. The revenue portion isn't in there yet, but we, we still have some departments that we haven't had our meetings with yet. So we have a few more that we've got to go through, so those numbers are likely to change on some of them. Some of the things that you can expect to see, you know, we did ask for all the departments to forward a level service budget, which basically means, you know, we're just looking for contractual obligations or any expenses that, you know, we know are going to go up to. But, you know, we, you know, we need some real justification if we're adding new programs or new employees. And you'll see that that will be eventually in front of you, each board, especially the larger ones, or rather, each department will come and explain their wants and needs. I know that the planning department is going to put in for a planner this year, and I think that, you know, I think that the finance committee and this committee have also talked about that, so, you know, that'll come into one of our discussions as we sort of dial in on these numbers and get them closer to where, where we want them to be. I've also given you on that larger sheet what we expect to be the projects for this year's capital. There may be some added. That is just one of the sheets in the five-year capital improvement plan. I've actually closed a lot of the boxes to make it easier for you to read it, so it doesn't really have everything in it as far as substance within each line, but each line is in there. And you can see some of these projects that, that are in there. We, we zeroed out in our cost because we think that we can do, like, a lot of the road projects through APA funding, so we don't have to, we don't have to borrow for quite a few of these projects. And then you can see some of the other ones that are in there that are, you know, kind of obvious, like the police cruisers that we have to do every year. There's some work to be done down at Island Grove, and I think one of the things that we haven't put in here that you're going to see when we another get updated into this is our replacement for an ambulance. We'll either have a warrant article that may be separate to talk about borrowing $4,000 to get a new ambulance. As I discussed in my last town manager report, we've had issues, and then one of them certainly should be replaced. If we can authorize the borrowing at this town meeting, we most likely won't get it for a year, but we certainly, so, you know, the debt on it wouldn't show up for the following year, but we would at least be able to order it, because they're about a year out right now. Some of the other things that you'll see at town meeting and on the town meeting warrant will be, you know, tax rebates for veterans, I think Adam had mentioned that to you, the Folio ramp, and the master in law, chapter nine, he gives you an option for speed zones that this board could actually reduce speed limits in certain areas and set them lower than what they currently are. By midweek, I would hope to have yet another update to what I sent you out in the revenue report. We have run our numbers for FY22, and, you know, most of our, our revenue seems to have come in a bit higher, a million-plus higher, and our expenses we seem to have done very well with. So I'm expecting that we'll have a fair amount of free cash to help boost that capital project in, as well as, we do expect that at least $200,000 will go into our stabilization at town meeting this year. So it's all beginning now. We've, we've started to update the website. The information is still on from previous town meetings, but it'll have a, you know, the tabs there, and certainly the instructions on how anybody can. And certainly the instructions on how anybody can submit for a citizen's petition or put anything else on the town meeting warrant that they'd like to. It's all up there, and we're going to continue to update it.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session and discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public party.
Second.
Are we coming out of?
And not to reconvene. Is there a second?
Yep.
Kevin, Rolco, Alex?
Aye.
Kevin, Tim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, folks, thank you for joining us. We're going into executive session, so everyone needs to leave the room. All right. Do you have any questions before you leave?
I have one question.
Sure.
Would you like to take one of these wires to?
It's actually, this has to do with an intersection. They're going to put some lights in there.
Where?
For Old Randolph, Richard Fitzdrive.
Yes.
They're going to put regular lights.
Right.
And they're realigning the streets too.
Yeah.
They have a whole plan set up we can...
I think that's 2026, I believe. Yeah, it's out there. It's after, I believe it's after Hancock and Chestnut, right?
Yeah. Well, that's on the same state funding program. I thought we were doing that.
Realignment was getting done.
Oh, are they the same time, 2024 or 25 then, I think, yeah.
It's our own surveys.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, if you want to email, John Stone can probably email you the whole plan. He has it on a DPW director.
And then just so you know, the end of Old Randolph Street, the one-way onto Thicket.
Yep.
They're bringing in islands closer on that to make it more obvious that it's a one-way and people don't go the wrong way down there.
And that is... That's a priority. That's been the most accidents.
I think that's out of bid now.
Yeah, that's, believe it or not, that's actually worse than Hancock and Chestnut, which surprised me. I actually, I work in Waymouth, and I come down, when I come down Thicket and the, and down, I actually been driving all my life, still take a right and then a left on the Hancock to avoid...
Going through there.
Going through that intersection and then going through Hancock and Chestnut. I'd rather come up the hill than, I drive all around, even though I... I'm a fine driver. I don't trust it. It's not, it's not good, so.